I am going to call the borough's K-3, October meeting to order. It is seven two. Well, first, on the agenda this evening is recognition of Physical Education Teacher of the Year, Patricia Rollins.
It's always great to start a meeting by recognizing one of our outstanding educators. This evening in our audience is Patricia Rollins. Patricia was named as the Physical Education Teacher of the Year for the State of Massachusetts. I can't think of anyone who is more deserving of that nomination and award. She is one of our outstanding educators. She is a leader at Lincoln Street School. She is devoted and committed to our students. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
And I do have a little blurb that I'd like to read that Principal Parsons wrote prior to leaving that I think summarizes your excellence. And this is about Patricia's teaching. Each lesson that Trish plans is innovative and thoroughly designed to meet the needs of her varied learners. Her special education colleagues appreciate her commitment to all students and her willingness to make any and all accommodations to support student needs. Whether the needs are physical or emotional, Trish is there to offer support and to brainstorm strategies for success. And I think it speaks to her commitment to the students. All the work she does really is about making sure that kids get the best experience as possible. So, congratulations. I think the next step for Trish is because she was nominated, she actually is now in a regional award that she is up for. So, the next thing, the next news I'd like to share will be the announcement that you are the, let's see, Eastern District PE Teacher of the Year. And then I think it goes to national and then global. So, congratulations.
Would you like, Trish, would you like to say anything?
Would you like to say anything on camera to anybody? Or? Thank you so much for your dedication.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And congrats.
Okay, so, well, yes.
Patricia, I'd like to say that I know physical education has changed so much from the time of being in school and even through the years. And I can see from your vibrancy and your smile that your classes must be very energetic and they must be very fun-filled. And there's so much that you're doing in Phys Ed today than just, you know, teaching kids to be collaborative with each other, to be cooperative, learning skills that are going to be lifetime lessons. So, congratulations and hope through the, through Dr., Mr. Martino, is that we will hear further awards that you'll be getting. But congratulations and have a great year at school.
Yeah.
All right.
So, we can move on to our next item on the agenda. We have action on the open meeting minutes of September 5th, 2018.
Adam Chair?
Yes.
I move that we accept the open meeting minutes of September 5th, 2018, as stated.
A second? Great. All those in favor? Any abstained? All right. Our next item on the agenda for new business is the Melican Middle School Improvement Plan and PTO presentation.
Heather Clancy and Brigitte Uzar are our PTO co-chairs and they are wonderful collaborators with me and the rest of our school community. So, once the projector warms up, we will present.
So, while we're waiting, I'd like to welcome Jim Jolker to the district. He is the interim business manager and he has already spent three days with us and has quickly asked the right questions, asked for the right documents, and has started the important work that he's asked to do. So, welcome.
Thank you.
And it's nice to have you onboard.
Like Michelle said, I am Heather Clancy and along with Brigitte Uzar are co-chairing Melican PTO for the second time, for the second year running. We are very fortunate this year to be starting off the year with a full board, a full board, and also all of our committee positions are full. This is great because we can dive right in to everything on our agenda that we would like to accomplish. That was not the case last year, so we're very excited this year to get off and running. So, middle school can be viewed as a transitional step from the elementary schools where parents are often more heavily involved, but not as quite as hands-off as the high school. So, we still do look for parent involvement with our fundraising, with our teacher appreciation breakfasts, and also with our eighth grade farewell. So, some of our key financial contributions, last year, we were able to support, provide $5,500 to our enrichment programs. Those programs include our Author Visit, our Poets in Residence, Mexican Mask Makers, what else do we have? Oh, Greek Festival, and Ryan's Story. So, we're able to make these financial contributions through various income sources. Last year, we had $7,500 in direct donations. Our Magazine Drive brought in $6,500, $2,900 from school pictures, $1,800 from Fun Nights, and then $1,000 for miscellaneous income. That income is our Stop and Sharp Rewards Program, our textile recycling. And actually, for the first time last year, we're very excited. We brought in $350. We had pre-orders for the All School One Read Summer Reading Program. So, we were able to work with the, with the English teachers at the end of the school year in deciding the book that they chose for the summer. And we were able to give order forms to the incoming sixth graders. So, we went to the elementary schools for the fifth graders and the sixth and seventh graders so that they could preorder the book and have that ready for summer reading. So, this year, we are really excited. After 15 years, we are shifting our major fundraiser from the Magazine Drive to a direct donation campaign. So, we're running that through the month of October. It kicked off on Monday, October 1st. As of today, we have raised $2,800, which is 20% of our $14,000 goal. So, we're really excited about this. We think that a lot of families are appreciative, that they don't have to sell. And we just passed out the form that we sent home so that we really encouraged families to see what that donation was going to help support because we do do so many wonderful things and we didn't want parents to think that, you know, not know where this was going. They're really going towards some of the great programs that we support. So, I'm very excited about that and hopefully by the end of the month, we've hit our goal and have a great year. That's all we have. Thank you.
As both an American parent and a student, we never thank you. Volunteering and dedication, the stone trip lives up to his reputation.
Yeah, the sixth grader, yeah, it's a great trip.
And what's missing is that little comic strip you had at the, it was very funny.
I figured I needed to tweak it just a little bit for tonight's, for tonight.
But yeah, you know, being able to just donate direct is a great option and not have to worry about the goods in the middle.
Yeah, I think parents, I think families have a lot going on on their plates and it's, I think this will just be a really good thing. But it's hard to break something that's been happening for 15 years, so we're very excited we were able to make it happen.
Thank you.
So, thank you so much for your presentation. I'm a middle school teacher myself, so I really appreciated what you said about sort of that middle ground, there's still kids, but you're learning how to sort of step back. One thing I was reading in your improvement plan, did you have anything to do, is the PTO involved in the improvement plan or is that?
I think so.
Okay, so that's a little bit different. But I know that parents have been encouraged to get involved in the classroom as well, which I think is great. I think that this is very much a future vision. I like how you're thinking. People nowadays are saying, no, we have too many things. Let's, let's give experiences. And this is exactly your vision and I think it's a great idea.
Thank you.
So, I hope that it goes according to plan.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Our fundraiser committee chair, Sherri Clark, came up with that form and we were thrilled with what she was able to put together because we've seen different ideas where, you know, they're fun, you know, let's donate $50 so I don't have to bake anymore. And that's very funny, you read through it. But I think this really, you know, keeps some of that, but really focuses on what, you know, we're looking to support with it and helps parents really see the programs that we do because I don't think people realize exactly how much the PTO contributes.
So, with this, are you expected that you're going to meet what you need and surpass it? Or what are you going to do if you don't get the numbers that you're used to get?
So, we're hoping, we're hoping to. I think last year it was half of, it was 70, 7, 7,500 that came in with direct donations. So, we're hoping that this will just cover the other 6,500. We do, do have smaller fundraisers. We've done restaurant fundraisers. We're open and we have some back burner ideas and one of the reasons why we're running this in October is so that we'll have that number early in the year so that if we do need to do any follow-up fundraising, we could, we could do that.
I have a quick question. I see your numbers go up as you go through, but also what you're donating to changes. Is it, do those really correspond or are you just picking amount that works for you?
You're picking an amount that works for the family. Yeah. Yeah.
Jim?
I have two questions. I see you already had a raffle, right?
We did.
You did. So, my question is, when you say three winners from each grade, is every student put into the raffle or is it just the ones who have participated?
It's the ones who participated.
Okay.
So far. So, that was, we, we were encouraging as early of a return of participation as, so that we could get an idea earlier on in the month how this is going to go. So, 20%, two days in, we're thrilled with. Maybe that corresponds with the raffle. So, the students who participated up to this point, their name was put in for the raffle that we pulled yesterday. Anybody who now participates and the students who are not chosen stay in for the second raffle, which will be on the 15th, and then again on the last of the month.
Okay. And then my last comment is I appreciate it's every year, everything that the PTO does that stays school-based, what you raise stays in for the kids. And I know many times you support Algonquin, even the high school, and sometimes the post-prom efforts and that. But the money that you have earned also helped us during our budget season because it's, it's less money than we're asking the towns for. I had a question on the stone environment. I think it was on your first, it was on your first slide. And it was an amount of 7,300. So, does that off, does that take off the total cost or is it grants for students who may not be able to pay the full amount?
That includes busing amounts, that includes teacher stipends, and also includes any financial assistance that students need.
That's great. So, it helps all around because it does, even if it's busing, it lowers the cost for every student going, even if it's a dollar for every student. So, it lowers the cost for every family. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just want to thank Heather and Brigitte again because, again, they're extremely helpful and we have a nice collaborative relationship and we couldn't do the things for our students without them. So, thank you again. Appreciate it. So, before I talk about our school improvement plan and where we are, we are actually beginning year two of a two-year improvement plan, so this is a progress update. I do want to introduce some of our members of our school council who are in the audience. So, Linda DeFutis is here, Dominique Lepal, and I think Leslie Rutan just stepped in and she's agreed to serve on our council again. So, thank you for coming. And I also see, I think, a PTO parent, Amy Quasny, so thank you for coming as well. Thank you. So, I did bind your school improvement plan update. I don't know why, but I like to bind them. So, there it is for you. And there were a couple changes, I think, even since, since yours made it into the packet. So, again, this is an update. This is, we just began year two of a two-year plan. So, listed in the front is the group as it stands right now for the year. That's our 2018-19 school council. So, it's a nice comprehensive list of council members and we are excited about this year, beginning to think about our next school improvement plan, among other things. Just as a reminder, and we, we know these, but our school improvement plan aligns with the district's strategic plan, Vision 2020. So, the four areas of, the four strategic focus areas are communication, curriculum, student support services, and technology. So, as an update, under communication, we had four goals here and with varying progress. The first goal was about communication with families and I would say this is a work in progress still. We are always looking to get better at this. We have really worked hard and focused on updating our calendar that is on our website to keep it as current as we can. I was sending a Word calendar as well and I do that sometimes just so parents have access to that if they can't access online. But we have made a significant effort in terms of keeping that as current as we can. Again, we're always looking for ways to do better with parent communication. My Monday memos that I send out have generated some back and forth with parents, which I appreciate. I've gotten a lot of feedback that way from families. So, again, a work in progress, always looking to get better. The second goal was around the PTO and their work in communicating with families. And the PTO is always looking to find other ways to communicate. Their Facebook page is updated and from that, I often will get information that I might not have otherwise known, which is extremely helpful. So, that is another reason why it's important to be so connected with the PTO. Additionally, we did publish our frequently asked questions page and we plan to update that periodically through the year when we need to. So, that's a place that parents can go for answers to questions that, that come up. So, that's a nice feature that was recently added. In terms of our third goal around our website, we are always, again, looking to keep our website current and as a platform to keep parents informed about their children and what they are learning and how they are doing. This year, we have launched Canvas, which is a student, a learning management system. Algonquin has been using Canvas, so they have been using it for a couple of years and we jumped on this year. So, there have been some bumps here and there, but it's a nice way for us to get information to kids and soon we will be giving parent access. So, we're excited about that where parents will be able to check student grades, student assignments, all of that. So, our seventh and eighth graders were trained in September on Canvas. Our sixth graders were just trained actually this week now that we have Stone behind us. So, all of our students are up and running with Canvas. Our teachers are posting minimally student grades, a calendar, and assignments and when they are due. So, that's minimally what parents can expect from us, though many teachers are using other features on Canvas, in Canvas, and we continue to look for better ways to use Canvas. In terms of real-time information, we have played around with our Twitter feed as a way to get parents' information in a timely fashion. But the feedback I received from parents was that direct posts to the website are much easier for them. So, if a field hockey game is canceled, for example, or late buses, you know, are canceled because of the weather, it's much easier for families if that goes directly on the website. So, we did shift to that and we have moved toward using our Twitter feed more as posting photos and learning activities that the students are involved in. Our fourth goal under communication was to involve families more in the school. As you already heard, middle school is a time where sometimes we think that students don't want their parents or family members in, but that's, they do still want them in. So, we've expanded the way we invite parents in. Last year, our sixth grade science teachers invited parents in to do some work on science labs. These are a couple pictures. One is of a grandparent, one is of a parent working with students. And the students really enjoyed it. The parents and the people who came in enjoyed it and it was, it was very helpful. So, we plan to do more of that moving forward. Under the second strategic focus area of curriculum, we had four goals here, too. One was around curriculum mapping and we have maintained our Atlas curriculum maps. As we are shifting to using Canvas, we are looking at ways of getting more information in Canvas while also keeping Atlas current and updating Atlas at least three times a year. But again, a work in progress. The second goal under this strategic focus area was around computer-based common assessments and our students have been testing, doing their MCAS testing using devices for two years now. Last year, we made a commitment as a school to offer students more computer-based assessments throughout the year so they would have more practice. And all teachers committed to giving at least four. Most teachers gave many more than that, but to get students ready for their next steps in their educational careers and beyond. And in fact, many teachers had that as their own personal goal in their ed evaluation format. And now we're moving into really using the data that can be generated from some of those assessments in even more effective ways. For the third goal under curriculum, we have a goal about changing our master schedule and we have not made a whole lot of progress in changing the big schedule. We've made some minor changes. One of the things that we're most proud of is that this year, we will be offering intervention blocks to help students in the general ed setting who need supports. So, we are working now on creating tools to identify students in the areas of executive functioning and/or reading. And we will be creating screening tools and using screening tools and restructuring how we offer supports for students during what is a study block for most students, which will become an intervention block for students who need that. So, more details to come. That's a work in progress. And then finally, under curriculum, we're very committed to providing in-house professional development opportunities to teachers where they get coverage for classes for, say, half a day and they get to really dig in with their colleagues and work. In the past, we offered this for science teachers as they were aligning to the new standards. Last year, our Canvas early adopters, so our small group of teachers who began piloting Canvas last year, they had a few times throughout the year where they could meet uninterrupted and really get some work done and collaborate. And this year, there are plans in the works to offer similar kinds of PD opportunities for our social studies teachers as they begin to align to the new curriculum standards. The third strategic focus area is Student Support Services. We had five goals under this one. The first one is about Jessica Minahan, who is a board-certified behavior analyst. She is nationally known. A couple of years ago, several of us went to hear her speak and participated in her training for a day. And last year, we were able to send more teachers from here at the same time. Last year, the district had her in the district to do parent presentation and work with some of our staff. So, last year, every teacher who was writing goals had a goal and you can't read it, but it's up there, a student goal that they created around implementing Jessica Minahan's strategies, that are research-based strategies for dealing with students and their behavior and for understanding behavior as communication. So, we've made a lot of progress there. We have more work to do and the NEF generously awarded us with a grant so we can have Jess Minahan come to school this year and work with all of our staff. So, we're making progress there. We're excited to have her here and very thankful for the NEF for their support. And teachers are asking, when's she coming, when's she coming? So, so we're excited about that. The second goal was around our ELL program and the development of that. We are making progress on this goal as well. One of the things that we did this year was to add our ELD teachers to our comprehensive care team, which we, we didn't have them on that team before. And that has been a huge help for another perspective for the team, but also for support for our English language learners. Additionally, last year, we involved our ELD teachers in scheduling in more specific and targeted ways. And that's paying off this year with the kids and their schedules. We continue to work on developing that, but, but we are seeing some success. Our third goal was around our STEPS program and that's the program that is, was funded by the Metro West Grant. And the goal involved us really articulating the roles and responsibility as, responsibilities of the clinician and the teacher in that program, us developing entrance and exit criteria, us developing data sheets that we could agree on, all sorts of things. And we have made a lot of progress with that. Something else that we've been able to benefit from is the involvement of BRIGHT, which is Bridging Resilient Youth in Transition. And last year, we had them in twice. This year, we've already met with them three times. We started over the summer and we've had two meetings since school started and they're a wonderful resource. That's how this whole kind of program got started. We met with them today, in fact, and the support is, they're helping us sort of solidify and articulate better what we're doing. So, a lot of growth there, still work to do. Our Strides program is the less of the restrictive of our therapeutic programs and some of the, part of that goal was very similar to the STEPS goal because we do need to articulate roles and responsibilities. We do need to get consistent with our data collection, exit and entrance criteria. So, those programs work together, though they're separate, there's some overlap. Again, we've made a lot of progress there, but we still have work to do and, and we keep, keep working at it. The fifth goal was around our, our language-based program and we've made a commitment to really doing better with our co-teaching model. Our language-based teacher teaches sixth, seventh, and eighth graders who have been identified as in need of this sort of support. They get their English and reading in small group. But then there is a need to support those students in the general ed setting, the social studies and the science class. So, we, our language-based teacher, Amy Glennon, as well as our speech-language pathologist, have worked really hard at co-teaching in social studies in one grade and science in another grade. Those, they meet weekly with the classroom teachers and they really are co-teaching. Again, we still have more work to do with that, but we have made a lot of progress since we started. And then finally, the last strategic focus area is technology. We had five goals here. The first goal was about technology implement, integration. And we're excited because Michael Grosha, whose picture is up there, he's the Instructional Technology Specialist and he's full-time here this year. Last year, he was about half-time. So, because he's full-time, we are able to obviously do more. He is doing some co-teaching with teachers already. He has been the one to train students on Canvas. He is meeting with teams to share different tools that teachers can use. So, he's been a real support and we are confident that once we get Canvas sort of under our belts a little bit, along with Go Guardian, which is something that we use to monitor the internet when students are on it, that we will really be able to fly with technology and he's, he's been wonderful. The second goal under technology was around our one-to-one Chromebook initiative last year. So, in October of 2017, we were able to give every seventh and eighth grader a Chromebook that he or she signed out in the morning during homeroom and then signed back in in the afternoon during homeroom. So, they were carrying Chromebooks around with them, which was terrific. With that came a few struggles that we had, some growing pains around monitoring the kids and their technology use. We're in a much better place this year and we have some systems in place that are helping teachers monitor that so they can really move forward with the usage of technology for teaching and learning. This year, we also were able to add to our Chromebook fleet and sixth graders, we have enough for sixth graders to all have a Chromebook as well. Unlike the seventh and eighth graders, they are not carrying them around with them. They are in their classrooms and they use them when they go to their classrooms. So, there's a little So there's a little bit of a difference there, but we are making a lot of progress there as well. The third goal was around our in-house tech committee. And last year, as I mentioned, we had a small group of teachers who were the early adopters for Canvas. And last year, they were able to meet with the whole faculty and really train them on Canvas. And then they were able to also meet in their curriculum groups and train smaller groups of teachers. And then teachers worked on this over the summer. And so when we came back in the fall, we all sort of had a base of knowledge, and we were able to kind of get started with Canvas. Since then, our early adopters, along with other teachers, have led faculty meetings to help faculty with Canvas and other tech tools, and they continue to ask to be able to do that. So it's pretty exciting that teachers are teaching teachers. We know that they learn best that way, and we are moving forward with that as well. And then our fourth initiative was around STEM. We shifted a little bit, and we are implementing and incorporating more STEM activities into the science classroom. We still have tech engineering. One of our tech engineering teachers, though, now is a sixth-grade science teacher. And what's been really nice is the ability to do a lot of different kinds of STEM activities in the science classroom, along with the tech engineering classrooms, and to really try to bridge that a bit. And then finally, one of the goals, our last goal, was on having a parent tech information night. We have had these in the past. The goal was to start having them again. We didn't have any last year, but this year, we have two that we are planning. One will be this fall, late in the fall, and one will be in the spring. So we are excited about that. And I will just end with this quote, because I like it. "Without continual growth and progress, such words as improvement, achievement, and success have no meaning." Benjamin Franklin.
Thank you. Committee members have any questions?
Thank you for presenting all the stuff to speed. What was the primary driver behind making the new master schedule? What's the goals? How'd that come about?
So there are a couple of goals. One is around our math instruction. We would love to be able to offer students an hour of math a day. Currently, they receive about 43 minutes of math a day, and research shows that that extra time each day can make a significant difference. So mathematics is one of the drivers. A second driver is our enrollments. They're going down, so we do need to look at restructuring simply because of our numbers. So that was another one. And then a third one is around the way we are able to provide interventions for students who are not on IEPs, the way we can provide those through the general ed setting. So those are the big drivers. I think more will come about, but those are the primary ones.
I think it's, I see a theme throughout a few of the goal areas in that there's a lot of collaboration, multidisciplinary teams, like the comprehensive care team, the general education, special education. So I think that's fantastic. I think that's how we synergize and use the staff best, and I think that's a real positive. And the use of the behavior code, work by Jennifer Man, very well supported, so takes some of the mystery out of behavior, which is nice, because it can be really elusive and nebulous in why we do what we do and when do we do it. That's fantastic. So that, I like the teachers, the early adopters as well with the tech, because I think that's neat to let people follow their interests and, you know, use that, use them as a resource to kind of get out of the way and let them explore and then work with their colleagues. Because, like you said, who understands better, you know, the day-to-day work of a teacher than another teacher, so that's awesome. I'm curious about the tech engineering reduction. How did that happen? What, you know, what was the context for that? And how is that going? It's probably early, but, you know, what are your thoughts on?
So I think it is a little bit early to tell. Our tech engineer, we were fortunate in that our tech engineering class size was kept at between 10 and 12 for years. That's very low when you're looking at declining enrollments. So when you're looking for places where you can make some changes, you have to look at the smallest class sizes, and those were very small. So those class sizes now are bigger, which obviously means the tech engineering teacher has to sort of shift some of what he's doing. As far as how that's going, I would say it's going pretty well, but it's early, and so that class meets once a week. So until he has some traction and some momentum, it's going to be a little bit hard to tell.
Yeah. I mean, on the one hand, you have the small class size, which is the model used to reduce it, but on the other hand, you have the hands-on and some of the other things involved. So hopefully later on this year, you'll be able to tell us more about, you know, how that experiment, not experiment, but how that change has gone this year and what's needed for next year. Definitely. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I think that the plan is very comprehensive. I love the goals that you have set. I'm wondering, has Melikan ever had another school improvement plan? I'm just wondering about timeline. Is this something that came out of a need, or is this something that's routine? I guess is my question.
You mean the whole improvement plan?
Yes.
So that improvement plan was developed a year ago. So the school council and I developed the improvement plan, so now we're halfway through it. So this is just sort of an update on those goals. So then from here, as we get going throughout the year, then we will develop a new improvement plan.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd like to thank Michelle and also her team that's out there. You know, since the Ed Reform Act of 1993, that is, I think, one of the most successful things, besides MCAS, that the Ed Reform Act has done. And it's nice to see that you have parents, teachers, community members, everything that was outlined in school councils that have to be there. It's a volunteer position. I know it's probably like a two-year term that's, you know, runs a bit. It's really wonderful to have all the expertise and the experience of people that you have on your team to help you. This is, you know, a very comprehensive plan. I just have a couple of questions. On STEPS, that was goal number three, you mentioned that that was a Metro West grant. How much money did you receive on that Metro West grant?
So we received, I think it was $225,000 over a three-year period. We have made, the district has made shifts to get staff somewhat off grant, so there is a process in place. So that grant ends a year from January. So it was January to January. It's a three-year cycle. So we are in our second year.
And is that a grant just, is that a grant just for Melikan?
Yes. The high school also was awarded a grant from the Metro West Foundation before Melikan was. We are one of only four, I think it's four still, middle schools to have this sort of a program. There are a lot of high schools in the state. We're one of only a handful of middle schools to date, so, but it is just for sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, just for Melikan. And it's pretty specific about what the money is used for in the grant.
So when you wrote the grant, was it written by you along with your school, I mean, your school improvement, your school council?
It was written by the nurse leader, Lori Pardee, along with our adjustment counselor, Chadam Flynn, our nurse, Linda DeFutis, and a couple of other support staff, and then with me sort of toward the end of it. But it was a collaborative effort to write that.
I know. We've probably given you congratulations in the past, but congratulations again. I mean, that is a hefty sum there right there that still is going straight to the students and to the faculty. I had a question also on goal number five. When you talked about the "Develop our language-based program" and said "Provide professional development for teachers," the measures was outside consultants. I'm familiar with Dr. Ilda King. Is that one of the consultants?
Ilda King has been a consultant for us, yes. Adam Hickey, also from Landmark, is a consultant that comes in to work with our language-based program. He is doing some work actually in the next week or two with our language-based teacher and other teachers in the district.
So you have those two consultants coming in on the language-based?
Yes.
Okay. And then my last question was, you talked about goal, your technology program, and that Mike Grosha is that he goes in and helps other staff with team teaching. So can you just explain me, is that on a needs basis, that team teaching? And is it just, is it for a lesson? Does he go in for one day? Or how does that work?
So that depends. He did some of this last year as well. So thinking about a unit last year where he went in to help with the actual technology while the teacher was sort of teaching the content, it was science, and he was able to help students with whatever pictures they were taking. I don't remember what app they were using, but they were, they were working together. So the teacher didn't really have to worry about the technology. He was able to really help with the technology while she got them the content. And then as they were working and doing what they were asked to do, both of them were able to go around and help the students. So that varied. Last year, his involvement, sometimes it was one day, sometimes it was a whole week. It really depended on what teachers asked of him and what they needed of him. Sometimes what happens is he presents at a staff meeting, and it's a really neat app, or it's a really important teaching tool, and then teachers immediately say, "Can you come work with me?" And he'll meet with teachers during a prep, and he'll help them think about what they want to do and develop a lesson plan or a unit plan. And then he'll get in as much as they need him. Some teachers need more support than others, so he's very flexible about how much support he offers them. But he is available, and I think he, he's already this year met with all of the teaching teams at least twice. And he's met with our specialist teachers, so art, phys ed, music, all of them as well, at least twice. And he's met with our special ed teachers as well. So he's really a valuable resource in terms of actually using the technology, but because of his experience in the classroom teaching, he's also really, he's really adept at helping them think about lessons and units that they can, that they can use.
That's wonderful, because that's really a plus. I mean, learning never stops, no matter what age you are. And even for the staff, there might be, you know, sometimes maybe older staff, myself may be leery about using technology, but having that extra support in the room so the teacher can do the content of curriculum is really wonderful. So hats off for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I will say, I just wanted to make a comment. Keith mentioned it, and you just mentioned it. But what's been really wonderful for us as we've started this year is the amount of teachers who have said, "Can I share this with the whole staff? Can I share this with them?" They're so excited about using the technology. So I think for teachers who may be a little bit reluctant, it's really nice for them to hear from their colleagues. And one of the early adopters will say, "You know how I am with technology, and I love it, and I can do it." So it's been really nice, a nice way to kind of get some momentum.
I just want to thank Principal Carr for her hard work. And it's hard to believe that it's only been a year since this plan has been in place. It was a very ambitious plan, and a lot of the components and projects that you spoke about aren't simple. They require a team and a lot of thought and a lot of work. So I want to thank you for that. And I know you have excellent teachers working toward this plan, so I'm excited to see the fruits of your labor after year two. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is the MASC and MAS joint conference. We have the resolutions, the review of the resolutions in our packets. We also need to delegate for.
So first of all, it's not too late to register for the conference. It's November 7th through the 10th, and it's the Mass Association of Schools and Communities' Joint Conference with Mass Association of Schools Superintendents. So if you have not registered and are interested, you can reach out to Cheryl Leffery. She'll do all the paperwork for you. One of the events at the conference is voting on the resolutions. This year, there are nine resolutions. Each school committee across the Commonwealth appoints a member of that school committee to represent the committee and take a collective stance on policy legislation that the MASC delegate subcommittee has put forth. So in your packet are the nine resolutions. And I just, there's one that I find very interesting, well, they're all interesting, but one that I think is very pertinent to some of the challenges that we're facing, and that is Resolution Four. And although it pertains specifically to regional school transportation, it speaks to the challenge that school districts are facing in terms of competitive bids around busing companies and transportation companies. It's very difficult to find transportation companies who want to do the work and to do the work well. So I think anything that we can do to support a competitive process will only serve us well in the future.
What are we looking for?
We're looking for someone who might be interested in serving as our delegate.
If anybody's interested in going to the conference on Friday, November 9th, at 3:15 p.m. for the voting and represent our committee.
So would you have to go to the entire conference or just that portion?
So just the Friday afternoon where the vote, the delegation will meet and vote on each of the nine resolutions. And again, that's.
It's on the case?
It is.
I won't be able to attend.
I haven't ever been. I usually have a lot of work travel.
You don't have to decide tonight.
We don't. It's just kind of throwing it out there. So if you want to get.
At least we're signed up right now, huh?
Nobody is that much.
It's the nine? It's the nine?
Correct. Yep.
So going to this, do we decide on how we want to vote beforehand, and then whoever goes just?
Represents the committee.
Represents the committee and goes.
Correct. Have all of you been before?
I've never been.
I have been. Years ago, I went to one.
I have not.
I mean, I've heard that there are wonderful, you know, breakout sessions. I don't know if you, everybody's received this that was in, did it come in the mail to you? It has all the different things that are going to be happening at the conference. And there were some updates that just came into one. So if you haven't received either one of these, maybe contact MASC to make sure, or through the superintendent's office, to make sure that you're on the mailing list. And if anybody has any interest, I can give these to you tonight. Lauren, do you have any interest?
I might.
Again, no decision has been made tonight. It's more of if you have it, you would contact the superintendent's office by, what does it say?
We have to have this in by October 19th, I believe.
I think that it's important for one of us to go, especially for the regional school transportation vote.
So we can just think about it and get ahold of the superintendent's office and we can...
Just before the 19th.
What happens if no one can make that vote in time?
Then the North Shore School Committee doesn't have a representation. However, the nice thing about being...
Is Southborough and Regional going?
Southborough has membership attending as well as the region.
And so they're...
They would have a delegate voting on these resolutions.
Okay.
So we had on the agenda to vote to a point. Is that something that can be deferred until next meeting?
Well, it needs to be done before the next meeting. So I think at this point, it sounds like whoever raises their hand to go is going to be our delegate.
I think it's probably what is going to happen at this point.
I just have to figure out.
And then we can give an update at the next meeting of who that person's going to be, because you have to register before then, so I think that would probably be the best course of action. So reach out, reach out if you can, and that's, and then we'll let, you know, at the next meeting, how that...
And I think the consensus from the committee could be, if there is a member that can attend, that we would support them to be our delegate. How's that? So, okay.
Can we vote on that, or is that?
Do we need to? I don't know if we, it's more of a consensus. I don't necessarily.
Consensus, right?
Yeah. I mean, I think at this time, you know, it sounds like there's, people need to do some homework around whether they're available to attend. So I think we wouldn't be able to vote on it right now.
Right. Okay. But you have our support.
I like how you're looking at the newbies over there.
No pressure, no pressure.
All right. I think it also, for the new ones, for the newest members, like, I don't know whether, you know, there was a law that was instituted several years ago that new members had to have so many, like, PDP points to become a member. You have to get so many credit hours or something. So by attending some of these, you can do them. I mean, I think that Kelly, you went to something already in the summertime. And Lauren, so I don't know whether you, I don't know how many hours that was, if you fulfilled your obligation.
I don't know. Nobody's ever mentioned that we had certain hours to...
It's just the one chart the course, if that's what you're referring to. There's just the one.
Okay. You've probably done it. You've done it.
All right. So moving on then, we can move on to the approval of grants and donations. We have two tonight. Did you want to speak to those or?
Sure. Sure, so, I don't know, Mrs. Wright wants to speak to, or, I'm sorry, Mrs. Solis wants to speak to the Z grant? Or I can, yes. So we've received a thousand dollars from Harvard Pilgrim Healthcare, and it's to support the Zumba Kids Grant, so, and it's deposited to the Community Gifts Fund, and it's to support the work around education. First one.
Do we want to...
Need to vote to approve.
Do you want to go both of them together?
Yeah. And the second one is a grant for $200 to Proctor School, and it is from Custom Woodworking, and it's a rolling schoolhouse, and the schoolhouse is meant for students to take a book and leave a book, and enhance the love of reading, so that, again, donation was from Custom Woodworking in the amount of $200 to support literacy at Proctor School.
I'll entertain motions to Ms. Joan.
I move that we accept the two grants and donations. The first one, Harvard Pilgrim 9-11 Mini Grant in the amount of 1,000 to Z School, and the second one is a donation of a rolling schoolhouse approximately value of $200 to Proctor School.
All those in favor? And you will extend our thanks to both of those donors, to those grants that we The next item of business we have is the Superintendent's Report to the Committee on Enrollments.
So in your packet are enrollments for distribution, the enrollments are as of September 13th, and I'm pleased to report that we are within our class size policy I-240. If you look at the second page, we're pretty close to our projections that we made, we're about, our projections were 1575, and we are 10 schools above those projections. And on the back of that sheet shows the variance for the month of September, which is when students, so pretty accurate projections.
Item is the FY '19 Monthly General Fund Expenditure Report.
So in your packet, vote to approve until audited.
I move that we approve until audited the FY 2019 Budget Monthly General Fund Expenditure Report as of September 30th, 2018.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Oh, wait.
We'll do that first.
I had a question, just mainly because tonight it was brought up through, and something that I don't think that we really had a reporting on, is the outside consultants, and I don't want to put Jim, I don't want to put you on a spot tonight, but I was wondering, in the report, where would we find the expenditures for consultants, and because we never had a reporting of that, like, how many consultants do we have, and are they here two fifths, three fifths, and do they get benefits? So maybe that's an agenda item that when you feel comfortable to come through, if that's okay, Greg, is to have a reporting on the different consultants that come into the KDA schools, so, you know, in what subject areas, and, you know, their time allotment, and I don't even know, does, if a consultant gets, like, benefits or anything, if they're three fifths, I know if a teacher or an aide is three fifths, they would get benefits offered to them through the town. So I've never had this, but I, you know, just going through, and what Michelle's report did, and what you're saying, outside consultants, it just triggered something in my mind, so if you could give some kind of report on that, that'd be great.
Do you want to know how those are funded also?
Yeah, like...
Because a lot of them would be funded, as Michelle had indicated, out of grants or outside fundraising, but we can identify that and provide that to you.
Right, because I would like to know, like, where would you put consultants, because I know Dr. Elder King, because in my former district, she was also a reading consultant that came in, like, where would that be found in here in the budget?
All right.
Okay? Thank you.
So, all those in favor, I guess we're now the...
Sorry.
That's right, all those in favor? Great, except until audited.
So next in the packet are FY 2020 budget goals, and we began a discussion at the last school committee meeting, and what you'll see is the red line that we added, and just a general comment, how important these budget goals are in terms of the work that we do in prioritizing and making decisions around, you know, when difficult decisions need to be made around budget priorities, and this isn't always a common document that school committees have, so it's something that is often unique to North Borough, South Borough in the region, and it speaks well to how the committee operates, so just a general comment. Open to discussion around the budget goals.
Right. Joan?
I just had a question. Thank you for the discussion that we had last month on the full-day kindergarten and putting it into our budget goals. I'd just like to say that there was an article, there was in a community advocate on September the 14th, and it was talking about Shrewsbury, that they had special town election, it was on Bill School, and as I was reading it, it was interesting that our neighboring schools are going through the same thing, and even the wording of it was, is very necessary to hear, because they're also looking at full-day kindergarten, but like they said, there is an expectation, only an expectation, that all of the Cave Four schools will have full-day kindergarten by 2021. So I think what it's showing is that all districts, even surrounding us, are taking this very methodical and step-by-step, looking at it, all the implications, talking with town officials. I think that all districts see that there is a need for this, but it is a budget implication, and we have to talk to all the selectmen and everybody to make sure that we're all on pace with this. I know I've received some emails where people want that right away, I wish we could say we had it right away, I wish we had the budgets when I first came aboard, there were 10%, 12% budgets, and we're down to the budgets of a 3.5. Some years, it was no more than a two, so we would not have an override. So I think that we're in step with some of our neighboring schools, and I appreciate everybody who has sent emails, took the time, and leading this charge, and we're taking it also very methodically, but I appreciate the chair and the superintendent for putting that on as a budget goal.
A follow-up question on the topic, when might we see some numbers around, from Central Office, around what that might entail?
In terms of projections of what a tuition free kindergarten...
Yeah, what point in the budget process or the budget year?
So I think, you know, the Business Office is working on those projections, and similar to what was worked on in South Borough is a phased-in approach in doing some projections. Mr. Jollicker will be a key player in projections and looking at what that looks like, but obviously, the budget process is beginning, and we'll need to look at that data, I would say, in the next month or so.
So maybe sometime around, as we hit, like, the November to January, where you start to really get into some of the numbers and look at the projections.
Yeah, we had a little bit more aggressive schedule for South Borough, so we rolled out the budget to the principals yesterday, so that they could start working on it, and we anticipate that we'll be starting the process quickly with North Borough Principals, and as part of that, we will be rolling up the numbers that we need for the projections for full-day K and other programs in the district, so.
Very good, thank you.
Lauren?
So can we draw on South Borough's experience in their rollout, or are our budgets so different that it might not be comparable?
No, absolutely, I mean, I think that there were great lessons learned, and I think it's actually, you know, it's a strong model to follow, and they've had success, although there are nuances between the fiscal realities in each of the communities, but it is, it is a good model to follow, and in fact, that's what we hope to look at.
And in their rollout, have they reached full-day free yet?
So they had a four-year goal. They are one year ahead of their four-year goal, so they've actually made faster progress than anticipated, and it's still too early to tell whether they'll achieve their goal in year three, or if we'll still need those two years to achieve the goal.
Thank you.
I just wanted to make an edit on the third bullet in our budget goals, and that was based on, I went to the open house of two schools on last Thursday, and basing it on talking and seeing what was going on in some of the classrooms, and along with my professional expertise in reading, and then just also after Michelle told about her goal number five of developing language-based programs, is I would like to add one, two, three, four, five words into bullet number three, second line, and when it says "to support," besides having professional development to support social and emotional health, I would like to add these words in, which would be around reading. So it would say, "professional development to support," and this is the edit, "structured, sequential, multisensory-based reading programs, and the social and emotional health of all children." I can give you my paper.
Can you read that once more?
Yeah, so, end of the second line where it says, "professional development to support structured, sequential, multisensory-based reading programs, and the social and emotional health of all children." So what I'm adding in is a curriculum area, we heard about the professional development, that Michelle was talking about, the grant for 225,000, Michelle, which is right, is about social and emotional of the children, correct? But I would just like to add professional development in there, in a curriculum area, which is reading, and that, the structured sequential means that all children don't learn reading in the same way. All kids don't learn phonics the same way, there's some children that will not learn the phonics, and it may come up through an ed plan where they have to learn the Wilson Method or another linguistic approach, so I think that that's why I would like to have a curriculum area into that, and that's why every child learns in a different way, and it's like every child walks at a different time, crawls at a different time, but when they're five and six, they're all running and everything the same way. I'm looking to those children and those students that may need just a different approach, something that works for them, and I've seen, like, the Wilson Program being so effective with children that couldn't learn the basic way, and I would be amazed at these educators that would be trained into that program, or some Linda Mode Method, anything, those children will learn in a different way, and they get it. If it's something with their hands, with their fingers, and it might be the tactile, it might be the sensory, it might be something doing something in sand, the multisensory, some way so that they get it, so that we can get those support programs and get those reading programs in as early as possible.
And so you were thinking of this as just in regards to the reading programs, or you're thinking all curriculum areas, math, science, whatever, I mean, you're saying specific to reading?
I did reading, but I could go for...
I just, I wasn't sure if that's what you're going for as far as the language, if that's just too specific.
I'm wondering if bullet number two, where you talk about with instructional classroom models that are research-based and reflect best practices, if we can incorporate instructional classroom models and resources that are research-based and reflect best practices, that would then be more comprehensive in terms of math, ELA, is this a suggestion?
I put it under number three, just because it says professional development. I'm looking for support.
You're only looking for professional development expansion on particular reading programs, and other than what Greg is saying, that it's more general.
Probably math would be an area, too, but I would be a profi...
Again, should this be a budget goal, should be more generalized, or, I mean...
Well, I mean, I have to agree with Joan in that I have heard, I don't know if it's, I haven't independently verified this, but there's some teachers who've gone through some of these programs on their own accord, where perhaps the district, for whatever reason, maybe didn't provide the support, or, I'm not sure exactly, but that's something that we need to take into consideration.
So you're thinking PD and...
It's precisely this, what Joan mentioned, in fact, you know, supporting students with different reading abilities and accessing the support within district needed to get the training.
So do you want to try out that language and bring this back again, or do we want to, because that would, does this delay our budget?
Take it into consideration.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, you know, and I think it, you know, just, it's really professional development, obviously, it's training teachers on specific, you know, research-based reading programs, like you mentioned with the Rubeau, or, you know, Wilson.
Right.
And then it's, then it's implement, it's an implementation as well, it's your training, and then you're implementing, so I'm, you know, I think, I think this is, this is something that is a goal of ours, something we're working toward, so it's something I think could be included in the budget priorities.
Because even if, I'm sorry, even, because I know in some of these professional development programs, I know there's one where they send teachers, I think it's to Lincoln, Massachusetts, and sometimes it's even in the summertime to get a person trained in any, in certain of these, reading, a different type of sequential reading program the student may need, and so it could be something in the summertime, it could be just sending, or one person or somebody comes into the district, but I think that we need to get that professional development, because, I mean, my last question was, I think at the KDA meeting was that we hired, I said, oh, we had, and when the personnel report came out, it was like, what happened to all the aides? And then I think Marianne Allen said, oh, well, don't you remember, we took the aides and we put one special education teacher? So I know that, I think what we had put in the budget was a master's plus zero, so you think about it, you have a person who has a master's degree, and with zero maybe experience, but may, has the knowledge of those programs, but just may need more further development, professional development into that program to get certified, because there's some of these programs are really hard to get certified, and I think it only makes us better as a district if we have even one person K to five that can do this kind of training, that is certified to teach this one reading program, that can then be umbrellaed out to so many other students. So I wasn't that specific in my wording, but that was my detail, that was where I was going, right?
And there are budget impacts when you have to send people out of the district.
Right.
And it's, you know, quite honestly, it's a conversation we have and continue to have around having a systemic training program, making sure that these specialized reading programs, we have a cadre of faculty and staff who are trained in multisensory, research-based programs, so that, you know, we do meet the needs of all of our learners, so, again, this is, although it's specific, it is aligned to what we're doing and the work that we're doing, and how, you know, the conversations that we're having, so, I mean, it's really the will of the committee in terms of the budget priorities, and I, it is, I would fully support this.
Okay, thank you.
So do we want to rewordsmith it and bring it back for next meeting? What does that say, or, as far as the budget process, how would that, would that be too late for our budget calendar?
So if we look at our budget calendar, it's not a structural change to the goal, so I think, you know, if we want to...
It's just an add it. Yes, can we vote on as is?
We could take a vote.
With that amendment going to...
Either that, or you can sleep on it and see if you have another way to put it that turns out to be amenable to the committee, we can revisit it.
Could I just, we're still discussing this, right?
Yeah, so that would be the thing for that, just go back to the kindergarten. Determine the feasibility, I just want to make sure that this is like, you know what I mean, like, that to me sounds like we're just going to try to figure out if it's going to work, if it's not going to work, if it's possible, like, I just, that, and I don't know if I'm just reading into the words, or if that's really what it means, or, I
So is the goal to determine feasibility?
Or to implement.
I mean, I thought we, like, so does that mean, like, we're just trying to determine, like...
I think for the fees, for this, determine the feasibility of transitioning to tuition fee, I don't want to necessarily put on budget rules, you will have free kindergarten in FY '20.
No, and I don't think that...
So that's why I think that's what Joan came up with that wording, because we were talking about the transitional type of plan.
I just, like...
So that's what I was thinking, that it was a transitional...
I just want people to know that, like, we're ensuring that there is going to be a transition, we just don't know what it is, or the exact timeline of it. We just don't know what it is or the exact timeline of it. Or are we not even at that point saying that we are gonna...
My, my history with feasibility studies, like if you did, we were adding on to Lincoln Street, we're adding on to Algonquin or any improvements.
Solar.
Solar, okay. Is to see, is it something viable and what would it cost? Look at all the different costs.
Okay.
And so from the feasibility study, they would say, yes, you can do this. And to make it to work, you would have to implement this. And they'd come up with a plan. And you'd, this is a plan that we would recommend, but it's out of the feasibility, it's only a recommendation. So then it would come to us to see how we want to do with it. But they would look at all, I, my recollection on feasibility study is that they look at all the avenues, look at everything they can. Is this going to work? Is it not? With the expectation it is going to work, but to see how, what are we, what's going to be the payment and how is that going to work or how many years is it going to take? That type of thing. It's, in other words, getting it on here is allowing for an open discussion. It's there. I mean, this, people see that we are looking at this, the record, just as we did the technology information, implementation plan. Okay? So I mean, this is one step. Maybe next year, the feasibility study or something might be in day one, you know, year one, and we may say, you know, determine the feasibility and expectation of, and they may have a year, by the year, just like it said in Shrewsbury, by the year 2021.
Okay.
Okay. So we may have an expectation.
I think this says that, like as Joan said, that it is something that we want to make a priority to move towards, just by having it in there, just as far as actual numbers and that type of the feasibility within the realities of Northborough.
That's just the clarification I wanted. Like I didn't want this just to be like, oh yeah, we're going to still look into it a little more and figure things out and, you know, kind of push it off for a few more years. I mean, I know personally, this group has been working on it for, you know, three years. And I mean, this is a huge step to have it on here. It would have been nice to know this like two years ago, that that's what they needed it to be on here type thing, because I don't think it was that clearly made to the group at the time that that's what it took to move, you know? And originally, we were just a year behind Southborough. And now we're, you know, three years behind Southborough. And so that's where I'm just trying to, you know, I mean, we, we are two separate school districts, but we merge into one. And it's kind of like, there's going to be then a on level playing field at some point potentially. So that's just what I want to say.
So are we entertaining motions to Joan?
I move that we accept the budget goals as presented, along with the change in bullet number three with the addition of the words after line two, professional development to support, adding these words, structured, sequential, multisensory based reading programs and, and then going on to the third line, the social and emotional health of all children.
Seconded.
All those in favor? All right. Opposed?
I don't like it being in bullet number three. I think it belongs in bullet number two.
So you're opposing it?
I oppose.
So the motion passes since we have four out of five for that.
So next in your packet is the budget calendar. And we are here today, 10:03, 2018, to approve the budget goals, which we just accomplished. So the budget process is well underway for this fiscal year. Never stopped, did it? Cycle. A week break?
Yeah. On education policy, not at this time. Policy development or distribution, not at this time. And we have, next on the agenda is audience sharing. If we have any members in the audience that would like to share, this is audience sharing. I must remind the audience, it's not a public hearing. In general, the school committee does not have a conversation back and forth. It's just a sharing with the community and the community. So, do you have any audience members?
Hi, my name, my name's Elizabeth Rodney, and I have children ages six and two. And my daughter is in first grade, and we just went through the kindergarten year, and it was wonderful, and she had wonderful teachers. And now we're coming up on my son, who's going to be in, he's going to be in preschool soon. And I'm here to, tonight to show my support for the free full, full kindergarten, sorry, I'm nervous. The free full day kindergarten. Look at, if you look around, can you guys stand up? Can we stand up and show the movement of the moms and dads who are here tonight for free full day kindergarten? Because we need an aggressive budget plan too. Not just taking our time, because that's not going to help our kids next year. That's not going to help them the following year. They, you guys need to do it now. It's discrimination because everybody's children here needs to have free full day kindergarten. All right, I'm going to pass it down the line here.
Hi, I'm Kristin Teigen. I live at Six Leland Ave. I have three kids. My oldest is in first grade, Lincoln Street, and then four and one. I had a lot of things to say tonight, but I have to say, I was struck by some of the goals that I saw in the improvement plan, which is great. I enjoy the profession, but the vision statement, the vision of the public schools of Northborough and Southborough promotes high expectations and excellence for all in a dynamic learning environment that inspires opportunities for thinking critically, solving problems and engaging intellectual curiosity. And the mission statement reflects something very similar, that the mission of the public schools of Northborough and Southborough is to provide an exceptional educational experience for every student in a safe environment. I was eight when my parents moved to Northborough. They pushed their budget and worked hard to move an hour away from their jobs in a school district where their kids could have a great public education. I benefited from that. I think that was my experience here when I graduated. I didn't do kindergarten here, because I said I was eight, so I went to Proctor, this school, and then Algonquin. And I've gone on to be a successful assistant professor at a college outside of Boston. So I think I did fairly well. What breaks my heart now is that my daughter's not having that same experience. Again, my husband and I both pushed our budgets. I still talk about the large house with 2,000 square foot and five bedrooms, et cetera, that was a few towns over that I really, really wanted, but it was not in a good school system. Right? And so we got a tiny house on a postage stamp worth of a yard so that we would be in a good school system. And a third of my mortgage payment, hundreds of dollars every month, goes to my escrow account to pay the town for the taxes for that excellent school system. My daughter went to preschool where I teach. She had great progress from the age of two up until five. She went to kindergarten here. I paid and changed my budget around and made sure I had room, even though I could have looked at my budget and said, no, there's no room for this. I don't have a penny to spare. I gave up other things that I had that I needed. Our super old cars were replaced with slightly less older cars so that we had the money to give our children an education. And I paid for the full day kindergarten, but you don't get full day kindergarten. My daughter's 19 child class had one child who was half day, which means all 19 kids got full instruction within two and a half hours in a half day. And the rest of the day is just supplemental, gym, lunch, rest time. They don't get the full day kindergarten experience, even when you're paying for full day kindergarten. All that is rushed. And I can tell you from personal experience, I watched her not progress the way she should have. She progressed a little, but her former classmates who stayed at the school she was at got full day kindergarten, 8:30 drop off, 3:30 pickup, everything in between was a full curriculum day. Taking their time, going through different activities, they are far beyond where she is. And before I sent her to the Northborough, I considered keeping her where she was because she loved her friends and she loved her teachers. But I was also nervous because she didn't know anyone from town. You know, I live, work an hour from here. That's where she was going to school. I wanted her to be able to make friends and start school where we lived and where she was going to be going from first till through high school. And it breaks my heart that she has not progressed. And since I last came to the last meeting, I had heard that Southborough, found out that Southborough has reduced tuition already. So they also were paying for full day kindergarten. They have now twice had their tuition reduced on a plan to go to full day funded kindergarten. I cannot find G rated words to express how insulted I felt at that. That that shows favoritism by the district to Southborough, that it shows that my children are not worth as much as the children in Southborough, that it tells me that anything less than this body and the region as a whole, the district as a whole, committing to everybody having full day kindergarten on the same timetable by the same year is an insult to me and my children, that we are not worth it. I understand budgets are a reality. Believe me, I understand budgets are a reality. My household budget is very much a reality down to every penny. But when you want something or you need something, you make sure it happens. It's all about priorities. You know, to quote Joe Biden, don't tell me your priorities, show me your budget, I'll tell you your priorities. The money is there. I spend, again, hundreds of dollars every month. This town has lots of money. How you use it is always a difficult choice. I know it is in every budget. But this should absolutely be a top priority, not, we're going to look at the feasibility, but we're going to figure out how we're going to make this happen. And I would emphasize not making it happen, putting us behind Southborough, again, is insulting and shows favoritism that I don't think should be there in a regional school district, in one community of learners. All our children should be treated equally on all playing fields. And to the, to the Shrewsbury subject, I hadn't thought of Shrewsbury. I have friends in Shrewsbury who are very much paying attention to that because they have young children like I do. And in my opinion, Shrewsbury completely failed its residents. They have full day kindergarten paid and a lottery because they don't have the space, because they had so much growth population wise, because they built new apartment complexes, they let the contractors build whatever they wanted. The population grew to the point where they don't have full day kindergarten for everyone because they can't fill the space. So now if they get the new school and they build that school, now they have space and they have, have committed to trying to do full day kindergarten when that school opens and they have the space. Westborough is going through a similar process. Southborough, as I mentioned, is now implementing full day kindergarten. Anywhere west of here, full day kindergarten. It's already there, it's been there for years. And a lot of those towns do not charge near what Northborough charges for property taxes. I looked at houses out there. It was a lot lower in taxes. The towns take in a lot less money, but they make it happen. And so again, it's just, it's only priorities, really. And so I think absolutely, I would second what Beth said, that it needs to be a top priority, not the bottom added on at the end and we'll look at the feasibility. I've been on a lot of committees where I work, I know what that means, right? It means a lot more time. It means, yeah, maybe we'll make a plan. If it's not in place, by the time Southborough comes in, it's insulting. By the time they have tuition free, you're going to have high schoolers going into Algonquin together, where one group got a full day kindergarten experience, a real full day kindergarten experience, where it was the best possible education, and another group that did not, and their classmates that were a step behind their Southborough classmates. The budget goals are great budget goals. They all, when I was reading them, circulate around, you know, reflecting best practices and research based. I don't think I need to tell anyone in this room that research based best practices is full day kindergarten, it's the basics. And these are great things to strive for. And it just makes me even more flabbergasted that full day kindergarten is not a top priority because it fits into every one of these budget goals. If you want to give students the best possible option, you need to do, you really should have pre-K. I won't even go there tonight. My friends in Western Missouri have not only full day kindergarten, but full day preschool in their public school system, because that's a priority for them and they know that that helps even into adulthood. It has been shown that people do better when they're given those opportunities. At this point, after looking at my daughter's experience, and I want to make it clear that's not any kind of reflection on the educators, I adore her teachers, both first grade and kindergarten and everyone else. I have heard Mrs. Rollins' name many times. You know, they have wonderful teachers, but she didn't progress because of the curriculum, because of the half day deficit, because even though she was full day, she did not get the same instruction as her former classmates. And now it breaks my heart when I sit at my dining room table and talk to my husband about sending our son to private kindergarten, where he is now in preschool, and next year he would be at Lincoln Street. And he's very excited to go to his sister's school, except looking at how she stopped moving forward. I don't know if I can in good conscience send my child to Lincoln Street School. And being a product of the Northborough school system and Algonquin, it tears me apart. I'm very proud of where I went to school. Like I said, I think I've done pretty well. I was, I had great teachers. But I can't, if I don't think it's in his best interest, I can't send him to a paid full day program that's not really a full day program. Thank you.
Mitch Cohen, I live on Whitney Street. I have an interesting perspective on the full day kindergarten discussion. About 20 years ago, I was elected to the school committee in another town, one of these towns in somewhat western, southern Massachusetts that I think was maybe referred to indirectly a moment ago. In one of the discussions that we had, my first year as an elected member of the school committee, was full day kindergarten. At that time, the State Department of Education was giving grants to transition districts over to full day kindergarten provided by the district. We had in place already a program very similar to what Northborough has now, where the district was paying for half a day and the parents could, if they wanted to, pay for the additional half of the day. And my initial reaction was, well, we already have half a day, which is all the state says you absolutely need. What do we need anything more for? But I was young, I didn't have any kids, I figured, let me go ahead and read some about it. And I became convinced pretty easily and pretty quickly that full day kindergarten is basic education. It's not ancillary, it's not extra, it's basic. And once I realized that, I was ashamed that the district that I was responsible for did not offer basic education to five and six year old kids. Fast forward a few years, got married, had kids, went through full day kindergarten in that town. A couple of years ago, we moved to Northborough. I was very surprised when I was reading up on the district that we, and I say we, because now I live here, don't have full, full day kindergarten. It has that hybrid system that I thought every town had moved away from 20 years ago. I don't know what the discussions were two decades ago on the Northborough School Committee. I doubt anyone in this room knows as to why Northborough did not accept the money that was available from the state, but they didn't, and we are where we are now. But I would encourage everyone here in this room to think about full day kindergarten as basic education. And you and we as a town as a whole are responsible for providing basic education to our kids. It's not extra, it's not ancillary, it's not an option. I don't think about it as free full day kindergarten. We'll pay for it, I'll pay for it. My kids are older. I've got two kids, one Z and one in Melican, great, great schools. I'm not going to benefit at all by that, but I'm happy to have that be part of my taxes because it's basic education. That's what we should have. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lauren Fortier. I'm a proud parent of a kindergartner at Lincoln and a three year old. Both of my kids are in the Northborough public school systems and we're very thankful to have this school system. I'm thrilled at the proposal for full day kindergarten and no cost to families and that it's being considered in this year's budget and wanted to give a little bit of perspective about the financial impact that it has. about the financial impact that it has on some families. We have a blend of families here in Northborough with a substantial number of families that have either a working single parent or both parents who work outside of the home. This creates a significant challenge for families to establish and pay for childcare outside of the regular school hours. Keep in mind that after school services that are offered through Northborough at the schools are only available to kindergarten students that are there for the full day. It is not an option for half day students to use the NEDP, excuse me, the NEDP program. So let's talk numbers because we're talking budget. Per the 2016 data, the median household income in Northborough is approximately $97,000 annually. So the NEDP program, before and after school program, five days a week for one child, costs $5,500 a year. Full day kindergarten, as we know, costs $3,250 annually. So together, NEDP and kindergarten tuition represents $8,800, which is actually 9% of the median annual household income. This is an enormous percentage. We're able, and we're only talking about one child here, not two, like many families have in town. If we're able to offer full day kindergarten to Northborough families without tuition cost, the cost for working families using extended day services would then be reduced to 5.7% of the median annual household income. This is an enormous change for a family and really can decrease the cost burden on families to send their kids to school. I know of families that a parent has chosen to stop working until their child is in a free full day program because of the exorbitant costs associated with early education and extended day services. And I know of families, including my own, as you see, that have picked up extra hours of work during the evenings or off hours to offset these costs. So please consider deeply the impact that this decision will have on many hardworking families in this town.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Amanda Jabeau. I have two children, a four year old and a one year old. I recently moved to town about three months ago, in part because of the excellent school system that is here. That was a major deciding factor for us. I'm going to speak about the full day kindergarten, as so many others have. I don't have, you know, as long of a speech prepared. I support, you know, all of the points that others have made, but needless to say, I didn't even consider that full day kindergarten was not available here. I'm from Ohio. It's just something that happens and it's so beneficial. So it didn't even cross my mind, I just assumed that it was available and such an excellent school system. And I was very surprised when I found out that it was not, something so fundamental that is just, that is just not available here. So, you know, again, I was very surprised. I think if I had known that before I moved here, it probably would have weighed into my decision to maybe consider other communities, which there are many in Massachusetts which do offer that. I am very proud to live here. I'm still getting my feet wet and learning things, but I am very proud to live here. And so, you know, tonight, I've missed the time that I spend with my children every night, pretty much the only time I get to spend with them during the day because I work full time. I've missed part of dinner, I missed bath time, I missed story time tonight to be here to fight on their behalf. So I really implore the committee to strongly consider the continued impact by not moving this issue forward, both to our children and just to our community, other families such as mine, who may make the decision not to come to Northborough because this is such a negative factor and discourages them from moving here. So again, you know, thank you for your time and, you know, I really implore the committee to really strongly consider this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Leslie Rutan, Board of Selectmen, good evening. This is a different topic. I just wanted to make mention of something that came up at last month's meeting. I think it was Rebecca Vasavi, Vasavi, sorry, and Suzie, who had expressed some concerns about security at polling venues. And I do agree with that concern and have felt the same way when I've walked in to vote. So I wanted to mention that I did pass along this information to the town clerk, police chief, and the town administrator, who then spoke with the superintendent. And I did get word this evening before the meeting that the town will be supplying additional police presence at the polls in November. And I think that's very, very important because of the layout of the schools. Normally the schools are secure during the day and all of a sudden, on voting day, the doors are open and anyone can come in. And because of the different hallways in our schools, I think it's important for there to be a little bit more presence. I know there is a requirement to have an officer eye the machine that takes the cards, but I think it's also important to have one elsewhere. So that will be taking place. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just add one comment to your comments, and that is that it will be added to the agenda for next month's school committee meeting, voting in our schools. So just going to continue the conversation around future opportunities.
Sounds great, thank you very much.
Hi, everybody. My name is Mike Teigen. I live at Sixth Leland Avenue. I'm here in support of the free full day kindergarten. I probably can't say it any better than my better half already had a little earlier. Just that, you know, kind of similar story, you know, people coming from other areas of the state or other states, Ohio, New Jersey, where free full day kindergarten just was, and kind of surprised it's not offered here in Northborough, and that it should be a major, major priority. I'm also the chair of the Town Democratic Committee, so it's a common topic that comes up when we discuss local issues. And I know it's becoming a voting issue for our members. So I just want to make sure that, you know, it's made the priority that it should be. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Do the principals have, oh, sorry, one more.
I'm Suzie Sisleka on Emerson Road in Northborough. And I'll keep it brief because I have a cough, I can't talk very long. But I just wanted to let you know that we really haven't, we've spoken with Northborough teachers about this subject in our, in our study group for the last three years with the superintendent. We had teachers join us and principals, Susan's also been there, Greg's joined us a couple of times. But we, we got some quotes from some Marlboro teachers, they've implemented free full day kindergarten. And I also have some quotes from some Westborough teachers about the struggles that they face having the half day program, just like we do with the full day. And I'd be happy to forward them, I was going to read some, but just don't see it happening. So I will forward you the snippets, the quotes of the teachers, the struggles that they've seen and the improvements that they've seen as well. And thank you, Leslie.
Thank you. Any other audience? Do the principals have anything to share?
Yeah, I'll start. We have a couple of unified things happening throughout the Northborough Elementary Schools in support of October being the anti-bullying month, spearheaded by Alana Seer at the Proctor School and her PTO. In conjunction with the other Northborough Elementary Schools PTO, they are holding a Elizabeth Englander from Mark, which is a part of Bridgewater State University, will be holding a seminar on October 24th at the elementary school for all Northborough parents, to learn a little bit more about anti-bullying and support for that. Another community initiative through the Northborough Elementary Schools, spearheaded, again, through NEF grant for Alana Seer and Margaret McGinty. We will be having Greg Tang join us the week of October 15th. He will spend a day in each of the elementary schools with students and with teachers delivering professional development, which focuses on that. And then specific to the Z School, we've just embarked on our first community service project in support of S-October. We'll be supporting the Abbey House in Worcester, and we've pledged to raise a thousand pair of socks as a sponsor.
And again, on behalf of all of the elementary schools in Northborough, last week we enjoyed our open houses, had some pretty impressive attendance rates, and we're very excited to open the schools to children and their families at night. It's really cute to see some of the kids come in their pajamas and they are so excited that, and of course, some of them think that we live there, so that we're not leaving when they did, we would just be there again in the morning, which we were, but most of us did go home in between. And then Peaslee School has its second annual ed camp for students in grades three through five this Friday afternoon. If any of you are available between the hours of one and three, you are more than welcome to join us. An ed camp is kind of a self-directed learning opportunity, and in this case, the teachers and parents have created a variety of very interesting and exciting opportunities for children to explore something that they might not necessarily encounter in their regular curriculum. So there are things ranging from sports to arts and crafts, to languages, to science, to technology, so lots of interesting and engaging learning opportunities. So please feel free to come by and join us if you're able to do that.
Lincoln Street, it's been, you know, a great community rallying over the past month. We had a busy month with the Apple Fest Parade, which was great to see so many families and students turn out for that. We had our open house, which we were joined by our PTO and the NS PAC was there. The turnout of families and students was great, so many happy faces, kids really excited to showcase what they've been doing in the classrooms. We were also treated to a performance at the Lincoln Street School by the New England Harmony Brigade, which is a barber shop quartet that was out, that volunteered their time to come in and showcase their talents for our students. President Bob O'Byrne, the president of the Northborough Youth Basketball Association, has offered to donate new nets for outside basketball hoops, which is great. And if anyone's by Lincoln Street School, I'd like you to stop by and see our fifth grade, class of 2018, fifth grade gift to our school was they left birdhouses for our current fifth graders to paint and with specific directions of how they wanted them painted. And the kids spent some time in the classroom and they're on display on the access road along, next to Lincoln.
I know I shared a lot, but I'll just share just a little bit more. But I did want to report that our stone environmental trip for our sixth graders went well. It was, the kids were just amazing and they just sort of went with the flow. We had some rainy days. Jen Callahan, our assistant principal, stayed the first half of the week and I stayed the second half of the week. And it just was, the kids were just wonderful. So thank you to the school committee for continuing to support that trip. It's an important learning experience and a wonderful opportunity for the kids to come together from the four schools and to really get to know one another. So that was really great. We have our parent teacher conference coming up toward the end of this month, October 23rd and 25th, so that's coming pretty quickly. Then on the 30th, we have a parent information night for our upcoming school musical, which is pretty exciting as well. And just, I've been spending a lot of time after school, the one hour after school, just seeing all these clubs that have gotten going. We have a lot of new clubs this year. Dungeons and Dragons Club was very popular today, there were about 15 kids playing, which was, we haven't had one of those in a while. Minecraft Club, lots and lots of after school activities, so it's been pretty exciting.
I actually forgot to mention one thing, which is really important. At Lincoln Street School, we had Bring Your Parents to PE Week, and we had a lot of fun with that. 64 parents showed up for that event over the week, so they came in, got some exercise, and a lot of great pictures were shared out to the community.
So I have two groups just that I liaison for, so I just wanted to share. For the NS PAC, they're having their first meeting next Wednesday, October 10th. It's at the Northborough Library from 10:00 to 11:30 a.m. And they say to come and meet their Student Support Services Administration. So it's going to be hopefully a good turnout for them. They were also at all of the, I think they had representatives at all the schools, so hopefully they can spread their word for that. The other event that they have in October is on October 23rd, and again, it's at the Northborough Library. It's from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. And it's Brendan Mann of the ADHD Essentials, and he'll be giving a presentation talk. I've actually seen him speak in the Shrewsbury Library, and he does a really great presentation. He's really great. So if you're around and available that night, I highly recommend going to see that. And then on behalf of the Northborough Free Full Day Kindergarten Group, because we haven't heard anything from them tonight, but I'm just kidding, you guys did great. On October 15th, at 7:00 p.m., at the American Legion, they are having a guest speaker, Cindy Roy Gonzalez, and she'll be talking about early education there, so.
Great. Any other community members?
I'm good.
Joan?
I have four things I'd like to share. First of all, I'd like to thank everybody who comes in attendance to any of our meetings. I think you saw the positive that's happening with our budget. I know the budget priority may not be what you really want, but we're there, we're better where we were even a couple of weeks ago. And I think also you can see the positive by speaking up and voicing your concerns. Little do you know who's in the audience, and we had a Board of Selectmen there. She heard, she listened, and she took it back, and we have a positive result. So, you know, I know it's hard to come, you're not with your kids tonight, but you are heard and we are listening to you. So thank you very much. And thank you for Leslie and even for the teachers that are here in our audience. It's greatly appreciated. It's nice to see friendly faces out there. I have one thing that I'm going to pass around, and that is because when I went to the open house, I went to, I was only going to two schools. My goal was to do four K to five schools, and I only made a, which ones can I get the fastest? I went to Peaslee and I went to Z, and then they said, you have to leave. I'm like, oh my gosh. So I did make it to the other schools, but I was, it was so nice to be back in a classroom and to talk to the staff and see the excitement, and even see the kids. I walk into one classroom in Peaslee School, and I don't know who the gentleman was, if it was a parent, if it was an aide, but there are all these kids working on some kind of game or something, it was a curriculum game that they were working on. And it was just like, I don't want to interrupt, say, who are you? But it was really nice to see the interaction and the kids so excited to be in their classrooms and showing off everything that they have. And when I was going through, I'm just sharing some things. On this backside is that Melinda Kemmet, who is a teacher at Peaslee School, is being, she was honored already at the State House as being the Educator Alumni of the Year Award, and she, from Westfield State, and she is also going to be honored October the 20th at Westfield State. And so I didn't know if the committee wanted to maybe entertain or, you know, have a letter written to her, because I think it's always very helpful to thank the people that, you know, who've gotten these awards and identified and by their peers. And also a letter to be sent to Patricia Rollins as the Physical Education Teacher of the Year, just to show her our support. The other thing that I have to show that piggybacks on Kelly's is when I was at Peaslee, they had, the NS, NSPAC had their schedule. So what Kelly was saying, it's a schedule of all their events for the whole week, so I just made extra copies when I was at Peaslee. They had like a table, I wanted to say booth, but it wasn't a booth. This one here is something that I received, this can go just to the elementary teachers, okay? And this is a program, when I was at the Grand Canyon last year, and it's called Every Kid in the Park. And I do know if the principals, if you go into, I made color copies inside of every page, and I think it's, if you wanted to put, my suggestion, whatever you want to do, but what they're doing with the national parks is that every fourth grader who goes online and just fills out this little game and finishes, that they get a pass for themselves and their parents to go to any national park. And this has been, something that's been an initiative for a long time. And we do have some national parks that are around, I don't know if Cape Cod's National Sea Park would work, but we have Bar Harbor, Cady and National Park. And so I do know if there was something that you wanted to put as the K to four, K to five teachers, principals, if you wanted to put anything of that in your newsletter, just something for parents to know. When I did do the, I'm going to give a shout out to Z School, I just love going into the classrooms and just seeing, this was on a classroom of Joanne Gorman and Karen Johnson, grade two. Gorman and Karen Johnson, grade two at Z School. And this was just, I love these things for parents, you know, tips for reading with your children, and especially on the back, it has prompting questions which go to MCAS. And so it was just things to educate parents with, but it was nice to see all the materials that were there for parents to see that they can take and to work. So I'll pass this around for my board members. And also, when I was at Peaslee School, I talked to Mrs. Shields, of course, who was the reading specialist, and talked about some of the great programs, and she has this reading program that she is trying to get some through the budget, is getting some extra materials on, it's a different one. I'm always familiar with the Fontis and Penau. But there were great things that the Peaslee, and the Peaslee PTO, you can see, I was right on my notes, Peaslee PTO, they had this handing out for everybody. And it was a very worthwhile night to see everybody and a very learning environment for me. The last two that I wanted to share with was that this was on, and what I would like to do is maybe in November or December, have something on MCAS for our agenda. And this was an article that was in the Metro West Daily News, and it was in the Metro West on October the 1st. And it's a two-page paper, and if you go onto the link, if you can get back to the Metro West Daily News, because it's a new MCAS test 2.0, you can go on, and there's four different screens that you can see, and it goes on. I had to do some handwriting because it didn't work what it was, but you can pull into the screen, you can pull down Northborough, then you can pull down on the right, the school, and then it will tell you just the percentages of the school overall, how they did in advanced, proficient, needs improvement, and warning and failure. Now, as an elementary teacher myself, I don't, I don't want parents to get alarmed on any of this, this is a new test, because it only counts when you're in 10th grade. But it's good just to see how our kids are doing. And I was very pleased in English Language Arts because at third, fourth, and fifth level, none of our students at any of the schools needed, I should say, not meeting expectations. So congratulations to all the elementary teachers. That was wonderful to see that. The last thing that I have to share is that I used to serve, when I was a teacher, I used to serve on to, it was called the MCAS Assessment Development Committee, and this is mainly for the teachers. And I received the email today from Amy Carruthers, who's the administrator of the EL Test Development. And I highlighted on one of those papers the link to go on, because you can, I make sure through Greg, because Greg supported me in my position when I was serving on this as a volunteer teacher, and looking at the test and writing up their test questions, is that you look at the link, they have just released it today, and you can go on, hit that link, and then you can go on, it's, the second page is, I put the different, you can go to grade three, English Language Arts or Math, and you can go on to that level, and they have the open response questions, and they'll give you the example ours, and then a little write-up about why that was a four, why that was a three, or why that was a two. And then I also attached to it is that I served on it as grade four and grade five of the ELA, but the, I think it's worthwhile, it was fabulous to serve on that committee because you work on the test questions, and then we meet three times during the year, and then in the summer, you see the test results, and you get to see what, where they want the students to be progressing. And I just wanted to say that I think I highlighted on one that teachers can apply online by, but it has to be in by October 5th, but it's easy because it's online, that any teachers, any educators can apply for that position. And the only thing is that principals have to allow like two days during the year for them to go to work either in Chelmsford or something, to work with the State Department. But it's such a worthwhile experience because you hear firsthand, and it's in all subject areas, and you really get to bring a lot of information back to your home district. So those are the things I have to share.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Lots of extra reading.
My, one thing I would love to share is there is a master plan public forum that is scheduled for tomorrow night at the high school. Since I was the liaison to that committee, I just wanted to put that out there in case you haven't seen the signs that are on Route 20 when you drive down to the high school. I know it's blinking on the.
What's the end time of it is?
I want to say it's a couple, I think, I want to say it's like two hours.
I know sometimes they have like, you know, an end time, and then other times.
I believe it's two hours. Do you have anything? Jim's all set?
Almost set, thank you.
Great. So then next, oh, Keith's got something.
Sorry, after Joan spoke something, I refreshed my memory. I did want to also thank the, everybody who shared tonight, obviously mostly on the full-day kinder topic, but I learned quite a few things. We didn't live in Northborough when my kids were in kindergarten, so there were some things that were shared that were very helpful. So, thank you.
Thank you. So the next item on our agenda is distribution of personnel report, which you'll find in your packets. And also, for communications, we have a congratulatory letter to Roger Leland, who was the Apple Fest grand marshal. And then, and so, and then the last thing is just future agenda. Are we jumping in here now?
Yeah, this is, Christine Superintendent Johnson wanted to share the school committee presentation schedule for school improvement plans, so that's the schedule.
Yes. So this is also, I took one right, and that's for future agenda, so the next is future agenda items. So we have a presentation by NEF, school improvement plans scheduled here for that. Then I believe we, you said voting for school?
Voting.
Was going to be?
MCAS.
MCAS report results.
Shall we end up having some discussion about start school later on the K-8, even though primary discussion?
That would be in a combined meeting.
So no discussion here amongst us?
I think the next, I think there's an attempt to create a combined meeting before the next regional committee meeting in October. So I think.
It'll happen there.
Yep.
Oh, discussion about start school later.
Start school later, yes.
Within this committee, but it looks like we're going to be reconvening combined.
And is there, is there a date for the tours? Yes.
So the tours are Tuesday, October 30th at 5:00. And you can let Cheryl Leffrey know if you'd like to attend the tour. And we'll be touring Proctor and Z, and we'll be joining the town leadership as well in that event.
Thursday.
What time was that?
5:00.
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Where does it start? Where does it convene?
So we'll send out the details and where to meet.
And should we also, so would the MCAS one, is that going to be next month or is that going to be later? Would that be a November thing?
It's a.
Okay. I'm just looking as far as, we'll work through it.
Typically, the.
We're making the list, and I think in essence of trying to make the meetings as efficient as they possibly can, we'll just make the list and.
Just long as we talk, just long as the discussion's sometime, I mean, because you don't want to have.
Typically, we present the MCAS results before December 1st at one of the meetings, so we.
And we also had, Jim was going to give us about the consultants, a report on the consultants, just an update. And maybe just mentioned to Christine, just as we recognized Patricia Rollins, did we want to recognize Melinda Kement? And through the committee, did we want to send a letter to both of those educators?
Yeah.
Who we need letters for?
Patricia Rollins, who was the Physical Education Teacher of the Year, and Melinda Kement, who was the Alumni Educator from Westfield State.
So do you want your motion and vote, just so we have a vote on there for that?
So moved to write letters of recognition?
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Good. And if you would like me to impose those, I would do it if somebody.
Sure.
Do you want me to? And then send just to Cheryl Leffrey, I say do it.
I think the last one was.
Yeah. Thank you.
Keeping busy in the retired life, huh?
Hey! You can see what happened in the audience sharing. What does Joan do?
Got some stuff you can do for me, too.
We have approvals of bills and payrolls, and any of business which may be included before the committee. And our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, November 5th. That's going to be a Monday, as the conference is Wednesday through Saturday of that week. So just make note of the day change for that, and we'll entertain and motion.
Any upcoming subcommittee activities that need to be on the radar?
So we do have a policy subcommittee meeting October 24th.
October 24th. Set, so separate from a typical meeting day.
Not future, just if I could have a list of the school council meetings.
I believe that was going to be going.
Could I just?
Can that be distributed to everybody?
Okay.
Thank you.
Any motions to adjourn? Who wants to do it?
I beat you. I was a little fast.
Okay.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Motion adjourned.
Thank you.